So, welcome to our study session. It's Monday, March 20th. And this is just a study session, so it's just discussion between us and Scout. So Scout, you want to go ahead?
Hello. My name is Scout Turnbach. I'm the Historic Preservation Planner with the City of Littleton. And today we're going to be discussing the Littleton Legacy List. So, just a little bit of background on the Littleton Legacy List. And I have a PowerPoint as well.
And on note on that, I did have Wendy print off the stuff from ULUC on the Legacy List. That's the one that researched your memory on what from ULUC might that might have been.
Thank you.
Can I apologize, the packet got a little bit garbled.
Yes.
We're working on that. And we did print up the Legacy List for those in the audience tonight and all the.
This is amazing.
Yeah, thank you for printing the hard copy because that makes a big difference.
Yeah, I apologize with the digital version just didn't.
It's like got like a.
Yeah, it did. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yep, we're working on that. It's a good correction.
And we hope updated the, Wendy is going to be updating the online file. So, the online agenda will be updated with the PDF spreadsheet.
I'm not gonna lie, there is something wonderful about having a hard copy.
I know. We do everything just now and I just, I kind of miss that hard copy feeling. So, thank you.
I know.
Okay.
And it's like nobody's home center.
Uh, we're having a little bit of technical stuff while we get the PowerPoint together. While we're working on that, I just want to say that, you know, I am new to the Historic Preservation Program in Littleton. And so, I'm taking on a couple of projects that are kind of midstream. There's been a lot of work done on them, but we're just trying to get that final push to get them public and completed. And the Legacy List is one such program. So, the Historical Preservation Board members are going to have way more knowledge, background, and context about Littleton's Legacy List than I am. So, if any information that you want to share, any other context or background, please let me know. If I'm misspeaking about the intent or function of the Legacy List program, please let me know. With that, we'll just kind of jump in. So, my understanding of the Legacy List is it is a public benefit tool. So, it's a register of all of the properties in Historic, in Littleton that are eligible for historic designation, either as districts or individual landmarks, but they are currently not protected through any Historic Preservation Regulations.
Yeah, I have a point there. I guess the properties on the list are properties only that have been surveyed.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not all properties forty years old and older.
Right. So, now, so the properties on the list are all surveyed, but there are properties in Littleton that are eligible that are not surveyed and not on the list.
And I think it was based off of the Mid-Mod Mile survey that Michael Padilla and Diane Gray Tomaso did, as well as the one, the earlier survey from ninety-seven that Tom and Lori Simmons did.
In the two thousand and one, sorry.
Yeah. So, I think some of it might be outdated. And obviously, like you said, the forty-year rule is a moving target. So, we probably have more stuff that we could be looking at at some point with survey.
I spoke on properties, it's structures that are forty years old.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's correct.
All the properties.
Does that help Scout?
Yes. So, it's good to know that, that in order to be on the Legacy List, a formal survey has to have been conducted on the property to assess its historic integrity and value and eligibility for either national, state, or local landmark designation. Part of the reason we want to make this information publicly available is that we want to educate people and encourage people who might be property owners, who might be interested in a historic property to pursue landmark designation. So, this is a tool that's meant to let the people, let the public, and specifically property owners, know that their property is eligible for landmark designation, know that we have a particular interest in maintaining that historical value. And then, in the end goal of encouraging them to pursue landmark designation so that these properties can be under Historic Preservation Regulations. The information that I have for the Legacy List is this GIS file. And I can share my screen and show you what that would look like for the public in just a second. But the file, the GIS file that I have last indicates that the file itself was updated in twenty twenty-one. Going through the Legacy List, okay, I'm glad everyone is nodding there. I thought that there were a couple of study session items from twenty nineteen, but those very much look to be kind of discussing creating the Legacy List. What it's about, why are you guys going to be creating it? So, just to confirm, was this information compiled in twenty twenty-one? Like, was the actual, I know Lisa.
Twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it was right before I started, I think. So, like twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
We started the first summer of COVID.
Okay.
So, I started in, I went into April of twenty twenty, and that was the first thing I worked on. I volunteered to help Lisa because she was overwhelmed with it. And so, yeah. And I did a lot of the stuff on the spreadsheets.
Okay.
And then, there was a group of us that went out and took pictures. And so, I went out. We were all assigned a few addresses to do.
Okay.
And one of the things about that Legacy List project that Lisa did, she worked on it with IT and folks within the city. And I mean, it was really pretty trick. I mean, it had photographs associated with it. I mean, it was, it was really rather interactive for the public.
But that's what you have to show us, correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, it was like a story map. It was really, really great.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm so happy.
Yes. And I'll show you guys what that kind of looks like. So, right now, this is a screenshot of the Legacy List. And in just a second, I'll exit from this and I'm kind of show you what it looks like interactively. But to let you know where we're at, so just to make sure, did the spreadsheet, did that go into twenty twenty-one or just twenty twenty? Do you remember?
No, we worked on it.
Yeah.
We, we worked on it into twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
It was tabled in, when Lisa was still on the board.
I don't think I have that. Twenty-two, I think we tabled it, or maybe the fall of twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah, after it became interactive.
We were still on Zoom, I thought.
Yeah, we were still on Zoom.
Okay.
And Lisa was still on the board.
Yeah.
But she showed it to us before we, before she left.
Yeah, because.
Because I remember her sitting right here and, you know. So, we looked at a lot of the, you know, the photos and how those layers worked, so.
I don't remember. As my kids say, five years ago was really just two years ago.
The pandemic messed with her.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. So, where it sits right now, where it exists currently is the City of Littleton produces our wonderful IT and GIS department. They produce several different maps. They have public-facing maps, zoning maps that are public-facing, sanitary sewer maps that are public-facing. So, we have lots of different tools that we use to help inform the public using that spatial data presentation. And there's a lot on the back end that hasn't been made public, and the Legacy List is on the back end. So, it's been constructed. IT, this is what it looks like from our back end, but we haven't made it public yet. And before we make it public, we just wanted to run it by you, have this discussion in the goal of getting direction from you all to make this public so that we can add this to our website, and it can be another education tool that we use. So, this is what it looks like. There are several data points. Oh, hello. Absolutely.
The paperwork to you. I'm so sorry.
No, it wasn't till April.
Okay.
My apologies. My apologies. So, thank you. Sorry for the eruption.
So, there are different data points, and each data point represents an address. When you click on the data point, information about that specific property comes up. When it was surveyed, information about, a description of the property, information about the year that it was built, the original architect, what kind of style it was, its historic significance, if it's eligible for national, state, or local landmark designation, and then a picture of the property.
Oh, fantastic. I just, I remember, I took the ones that were kind of outside of downtown. And some of them, like out on Bowles are so hard to see.
Yeah. Yeah, and it looks like it's right on Bowles.
It is. Yeah.
Out your window.
And I am.
I think that's a great photo.
I will tell you, I am the one who will go.
I know that one.
When there's no traffic and stand out in the middle of the road to get the better picture.
Be on video. Additionally, we have some historic photos provided by the museum to kind of supplement each.
It's like history pin.
This is just fab.
And this is what we hope to make public. So, this is what it would look like when the public accesses a Legacy List. We're going to be able to look through the whole city. As you can see, it goes over that basic information, the architectural style, the year that it was built, its eligibility, historic building name, description of the property, going over that history, what it originally was, some key moments in there, and then these historic and contemporary photos of the building.
I left nineteen seventy-three on the Legacy List. That's just.
I am older than that building, I'm just gonna say.
Gallup that was probably in the sixties. I think it was built, I think it was. So, does anybody want to share with us?
So, that is kind of where we're at in this moment. We have this information we've compiled. We have excellent work that's been done by the Historical Preservation Board to collect this Legacy List. We have a format presented. We are ready to go live. So, we're hoping to get the direction from you, and we're also hoping to have a discussion about like what maintenance looks like. So, the first question I have, and it might be a little bit of a broad question to tackle in this meeting. It might need some additional time, but is this list sufficient or are there significant gaps? Are there properties that have become eligible in the past few years that are pivotal to being on the Legacy List? If you guys have any just ideas off the top of your head, let me know. Yes.
So, I'm gonna say. Yes. And the reason I say that is I don't think we've done enough survey.
Okay.
Like, I feel like, you know, we've spent so much time concentrating on the downtown. And then, of course, we all know how important the Mid-Mod Mile is, and, but it's been surveyed. So, you know, my feeling is, and I made, you know, a list of a few things that kind of immediately jumped to my mind when I looked through the stuff for the meeting tonight. And that is, you know, first of all, like, we need more survey because that's gonna, that's the key to identifying. We need to know why buildings are significant, what part of, you know, what era of history
Okay.
in Littleton do they contribute to. And so, I think that's going to be the first thing. And so, kind of secondary to that is, before Andrea left, we purchased a tablet. And we were going to do some stuff, some survey with the software that I had used at Discover Denver that's available, you know, statewide to everybody. And it just kind of like hit a brick wall. So, maybe that's something that at a future meeting, we need to talk about, you know, bringing that back up.
That's a good thing.
And doing some survey because really, you know, it's, that helps us be more proactive than reactive.
Yeah.
It's not the, oh, gosh, the demo permit came in. What do we do? We don't know anything about this building. It's, oh, we surveyed this building, and Eugene Sternberg designed it. And this was his first foray into this style of architecture, and oh, my gosh, this is really important. And so, I think it's really key that we look at doing more survey
Kim.
to get to that point where we can say, you know, whether it's, you know, your question about how often, like, is it after every time we do a neighborhood or a survey, you know, a bulk of survey?
Oh, yeah.
Or, you know.
Or is it just like a standing function that we do?
Yeah, or is it something that, or we, you know. Or we have a committee, like, we have two people who are kind of, that's their purview. And they kind of keep an eye on things, or if somebody thinks of something, they get it to that person, and they do a little research and investigate and get some information, like, as a standing to Scout so that we know what's going on.
So, Kim, what are your thoughts?
As far as, as maintenance on the list, I think it's, that was your question.
Yeah.
It is absolutely critical that we maintain it and continue to survey. It's our responsibility as, you know, a city to keep our surveys up, certified local government. And also, we do have the program that Chris was referencing and the small devices. One of the things that is so incredible about that, the way Discover Denver used it, they had lots of volunteers that were, they were able to dispatch into, into the city and work on this. And, and that was, that was very good. And I was very excited that we were starting down that road, and I'd like to see, see us continue.
And I, I trained the volunteers, so that's something that's easy that you can. I mean, the software is very self-intuitive, and we can talk about it at another time. But, yeah, it's, we could definitely get people who are interested and bring in more of the community into the process.
Yeah. That sounds very fun.
The weather is finally coming.
Yeah. Great time to look at it.
One of the things that's really important about this list, I know of at least one building that was on the Legacy List, and I'm sure it's still on, on this Legacy List, that has recently undergone some pretty significant renovations, and I'm sure it is no longer eligible. And I am also sure that the building owner had no idea what the history behind their structure was.
Okay.
And so, we've already lost at least one that I can think of. Also, one of the things that was really behind the Legacy List was not only that the public would have access to this and just kind of become educated about our city, and it's also kind of like, oh, wow, you know, that's, that's the history of that building that I walk past all the time. But also folks in the city who might be in the building department or something like that, who may be working with a property owner, and, and just to have the visibility.
Okay.
And they start working with a property owner, if they see, if they can have easy access to the Legacy List and just ping that address on the Legacy List and see that this is a, you know, a historic structure or there's significance to it, the action would be not for them to go ahead and scroll it off. It's just, you know, that would be a call Scout.
Okay. Yeah.
And, and bring you into that conversation, just to, you know, give, give, give you some visibility into what's going on.
Kim, fantastic.
And I think we've done, oh, I just add on to that. I think we've done pretty well on that with the pre-application meetings. But where we need to fill in is with building permits, which I don't think we, you know, have that same communication with applicants.
I think that, that's really key because the house that I'm thinking of, I know that they pulled a permit to do all that work. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know how that, that process worked with it. But they, I'm sure that they have no idea what they did to their.
In order to help Scout navigate what we're going to talk about, let's go back to the first question. She's got, is this list sufficient or are there significant gaps? Let's see if we can just, like, answer that for her and then go. Jason, do you have anything to say about that?
No, I've, I've been satisfied with whatever you've been saying, so I would just be using other words to say.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'm similar to Jason, but yeah, I think maybe it's a sufficient place to start, but also that more surveys need to be done. Like, there's so many, you know, residential areas in here that just have, have really cool buildings that I think would be interesting to survey.
Kind of by where we live.
Yes. Yeah, like Aberdeen Village.
Yeah, that's changing.
Yeah, and those, I mean, those are changing rapidly. So.
Even a lot, Sycamore, just on, just on the east side of downtown.
Yeah. So, maybe like a, kind of trying to get a sense of where the surveys are needed. It sounds like maybe some of the single-family detached home neighborhoods are kind of.
Post-World War II.
Post-World War II neighborhoods are kind of where you guys are thinking they're needed.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the list, I didn't have a whole lot of time to look at it just because of the PDF.
Yes.
But, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of, like, early Littleton, single-family homes that we know about. But I think there, we don't know a lot about, like, the Mid-Mod or, like, post-war.
Yeah, we've got commercial buildings for the Mid-Mod, but.
Yeah.
It's not residential.
People live in homes that are over forty years old right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of surveys are for that.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting because the two thousand and one survey, which a lot of this keyed off of, that was the, the, you know, citywide survey. And at that time, a lot of these structures were not forty years old or fifty years old.
Right. Yeah, that's twenty-two years ago.
So, there's like major slums of properties that are really significant. Those post-war neighborhoods that are incredible and significant, and they have not been.
And I think some of those houses along Ridge Road that we have a lot of attention to.
Oh, yeah. And I think we've got a lot of people who've moved here in the last twenty-two years who maybe don't realize what they have, like what Kim was saying. So, even just to have them on a list like this, where maybe they're not necessarily designated, but people know what happened in those buildings, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I have a note here, districts. Because I know this is really focused on individual buildings. And I, I think what we're going to find with the post-World War II, which is what they found nationwide is, you know, you probably won't have, like, individual ones unless there's just an important person that lived there. But really, it's going to be the collection of them together in, you know, Aberdeen Village. So.
And it's changing so fast. I see it just every day.
I go walking through there, and I'm like.
All the houses are black now.
The thing is huge. That is not part of this meeting.
Right.
So, I, you know, I think we might need to consider the possibility of districts.
Okay.
And I don't know how that would work. It might be obviously something down the road.
Yeah.
It is something to, to kind of put on the radar.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes it's that collection that, wow, this is a really great intact post-World War II neighborhood. And I know, like, where we live, you know, I walk around, and I'm like, they've got original windows. They've got original, they have their original windows. I'm like, oh, my gosh, like, this is a great little collection here. And so, you know, that's kind of where my brain went when I was thinking about.
Okay.
How do we manage this?
And I think that's going to change soon, like, you know.
That's what scares me. Yeah.
Brandon, Amy, do you have thoughts on the first question you have?
Nothing beyond the asides that I've already made that, that I think, I think we do need to pay closer attention, like everyone else has said, to some of the residential buildings, the Mid-Mod residential buildings. I think approaching it as districts or neighborhoods is smart.
Yeah.
So, I have a question. I totally agree with everything everybody said, especially about making the list available. What I'm wondering is though, I, I know that we're not doing a marketing thing. You're not going to contact everybody who owns a piece of property on the list. I wish you could. I mean, if it were free, it would be nice to contact everybody and say, by the way, you're on this list because that would be super interesting. But.
Learn more about your property.
Yeah, I, because that's my biggest, not worry, because it's just the way life is. But it's a, it's a piece of public information, but people won't know that it's there unless they go looking for it. It'll be on the website, which is better than nothing.
This is what I have on my list.
But could it be like in the Littleton Report or, you know, things like that? Like, there, I think there are ways to get the word out there. I mean, those, that you're probably going to hit more engaged people in those.
That's true.
Things, but I mean, it's, maybe those engaged people will talk to their friends, who will talk to their friends. So.
It's better than not making it available.
And positioning, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, I mean, I agree with everybody saying, I'm more interested in question threes, we get to it. We're kind of moving to the list, and then, okay, as this expands, where do we start? How do we include others as we learn?
So, do you have enough information on number one that you feel like we've answered that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I very much appreciate the direction that's kind of come from this conversation really about the survey work and that we've had a pretty significant period of time without any surveys done, you know, twenty-two years, and those twenty-two years were really essential to the build-out of the City of Littleton. And so, something that we really need to look at. So, so thank you guys very much for that.
So, the second one, she says, does HPP support making this available on our website?
Absolutely.
In your notes, you said you had, like, three ways we could do this. We could revise the current list prior to making the information public. We could revise the list and go ahead and make it public, or we just make it public. So, what are your thoughts on this? My thought is I'd kind of like to, even though we need to update it, and there's lots of things we need, I'd kind of like to put it out there.
A second.
And, and see what happens. And to answer your thing, Jason, on what you would do with it, you know how every year we send out those cards about the grant program? I was thinking that they might do something like that, just send it out to every resident in Littleton and say, look what's new on the Littleton website. And I think people would look on it and be, think it's really cool and, and play with the buttons.
If we have a budget for it, I.
Yeah. I mean, that's just my thought. But anyhow, back to number two. Those are, those are the kind of things she needs to know tonight. Do we, do we work on it and hold it back? Do we work on it and release it, or do we just release it? So, let me leave. Chris.
I seriously said, sir. No, she said there. I said, I'm sitting here. I, I think we need to get it out there. Like, it's been languishing long enough, and enough of us have put hard work into it. Like, let's get it out there. Like you said, let's see what happens. And we might find that people will come to us and go, oh, you have. Like you said, let's see what happens, and we might find that people will come to us and go, oh, you have this on here, but I know this because I have the deed or I have this newspaper article from nineteen twenty-two, so we might be able to, um, then we can start the revision process based on some of the feedback, or it might encourage other people to come forward with information.
Well, I also might encourage somebody who says, gosh, I live in a house that was built in nineteen fifty-five and had a cool architect. I'd like to be on that list, how can I help, maybe we have people who would help survey, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I just, I, I'd like to get it out there.
Um, perfect is the enemy of good.
Yeah.
True.
Get it out there.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Get mo- good, good enough to move on.
It's not good enough, it's good.
Well, also. We could have another pandemic and nothing gets done for another three years.
But, and people will have a lot of time to look up the Littleton website. Silver linings.
I love it, that's the way to look at it.
So I, I'd say there's kind of a consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a little off topic, but the idea came to me too, with like, part of this is public engagement and awareness and making people aware of it. Even in the back of the Littleton Report, we highlight small businesses, we've got like a Littleton like legacy feature at the back end of it that's super easy to tend to connect and highlight, and, because part of it will be awareness from the general public of what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a great idea.
That's probably more likely than a mass mailer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have it.
A bunch of berries.
Yes, it is a mass mailer.
It is.
Depends to everyone.
That, that's right, and that's, that's where something like this belongs, really.
An individual notice, I, I, I was grabbing the table.
You could see your jaw tense up like.
I'm like, I was like, let's do it, yeah!
Just so we know.
I do have to say that the U L C today, remember how it was so cumbersome years ago, once again, I clicked on it, went right to the thought, and it was like, wow, that was really easy to get where we needed to go, so.
We love to hear that.
So this could be the same. So everybody in kind of agreement to tell Scout that we'd like to, like it to go out?
Yeah. I have another suggestion that kind of ties in to that, since we're kind of talking about public outreach and mailers and, or no mailers and. Um, you know, over the summer, they do the, um, the meet and greets or the picnics of it.
Yeah.
Like, why don't we have a booth there, usually I always find out about them like the day before kind of thing, um. And so, it would be nice to like know what those three dates are ahead of time, and then, like, we have two people
That's gonna continue this.
From the H P B at that little table.
Staff at our table, yeah.
And we can talk about the legacy list, we can talk about what we do, we can answer questions, we could have pamphlets about, you know, the grant program or whatever, but I just, I feel like that's a, that has been a big missed opportunity.
Okay.
Um, and I would love to see us be more involved in that so that we are talking to people.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I really like that idea, and that is what I was gonna say earlier, is I think it's really important, whether it's in the Littleton Report or even better, in person, having conversations, to position this as a cool, interesting point of interest and not something scary. This is not, we're, we're not, there are no limitations or restrictions on your property, we just want to build awareness about Littleton's legacy and your.
Yeah.
Your, your property among others.
You're a part of this, yeah, you're a part of the story.
Yeah, you're part of the story, exactly.
Yeah.
And, you know, I went to the one at Kettering Park, um, last summer, and it was packed.
Yeah.
I mean, there were families there, there was tons of stuff going on and.
Are those gonna continue this summer?
Yes, and I, I believe that they've, they might have scheduled them, so if they have, I'll, I'll, I'm not sure, I'll, I'll check to see if they've been scheduled and I'll, I'll, I'll send out the dates.
As soon as you know, let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm happy to go, I love that.
Oh, fantastic!
And I can say like, if we have two of us at the table, I mean, two, four, six, you know, like that makes it.
For sure can do that.
We can divide it up pretty quickly, um, so that everybody can participate.
You gotta have giveaways, I'll say that.
Yes.
Free food, stress balls.
Stress balls.
Yeah, yeah. You need some fresh wet.
What would a historic preservation board stress ball? It's like a little Queen Anne house.
Yeah.
A little shingle?
It should be the, um.
I like the Queen Anne.
No, it should be the, um, the streamlined, modern, um, hair salon on.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I do like a stress ball. That's gonna be a budgetary issue.
Right.
Kelly Nardi has like an endless supply of tchotchkes, so.
We're getting our own.
She'll take care of us.
Facilitate that to some degree.
It's gotta be like a local business that we could talk to about.
A pen, you know.
Pens, I love pens, um.
Plus going up and down.
Chocolate.
Cute.
Chocolate, everybody would love us.
Yes.
Like an individual chocolate from the chocolate therapist, and then we tell them, from our local business.
Yeah. Okay, back.
Anyhow, Bill, sorry, sorry.
I promise, we'd be great.
You know, here's the thing, I like, I'm usually not a very idea person and like.
What do you have for practice?
Yeah, I'm not an ideal person, you have great ideas.
Today is just, I'm one.
I'm learning so much from this list as I read it while we're talking.
It's really cool.
Like, because if you use this list and just play with Google Maps and look at all the buildings, it is just, it's delightful.
You know, on your normal walks, you know, we all have kind of our normal walks, and it's like, what is that building, what is, who lives there?
I just learned that Wild Ginger is the old Sambo's restaurant. And I, I didn't, I didn't know.
I did not know that either. So, um, next question, how often does this list need to be updated? Um, as Kim said earlier, I mean, every year, somebody's house, somebody's building's turning forty or older, so my opinion would be yearly, we'd have to yearly do update the list.
Yeah.
Which would mean an ongoing survey process, but. I don't know, what do you know, what do you think, Brandon?
Are there capacity issues for that, to do a survey every year, is that tenable?
Well, it's labor. What do you think?
I think it would be a lot of work, if, if we're trying to survey stuff we've never surveyed before and then we're trying to check on these like every year, and how many are there? So I believe that there's like a hundred and ten entries currently, and it's gonna grow.
Right, right.
We hope. Um, it will continue to grow, so that's a lot to kind of keep after, um, I know when I was on the Aurora H P C, like, we had this adopt a landmark program, and so, like, we grouped them by location, and then each of us adopted those and like each month, a different board member or commission member would give a presentation on like the status, just. So I'm trying to think like, how could we make that work for this?
I don't know, I mean, that's kind of about us.
There's a lot, a lot of properties, and so that would require someone that, you know, at least go by and check it.
Or require us knowing what's turning over forty every year too.
Yeah, so we would need some kind of this, maybe from the assessor's office or something. So we might need to give this some thought.
Okay.
And Rick might have some ideas when he's back as well.
Well, I think it's, as we, um, you know, as we learn things, um, that we come across with different, uh, structures and if, if we do, um, kind of, uh, surveying with, uh, the little, um, device.
Pamphlets, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, that's the kind of thing that's not, you know, a full citywide survey or something, and that is the kind of thing that you can take information and.
Yeah, yeah.
Update it, because this is pretty fluid, it would be easy to, to update.
And I think that we as a city need to have a discussion, kind of taking some of this feedback in about surveying, you know, like, what kind of is the city's plan for surveying, how do we lay that out, what's our timeline, what's the kind of scope for surveying? We're looking at, I know Andrea had explored some things before she left, and so I'm looking through that, but, but that might be a good time to come back with this question, it is after we have some internal discussions about what is our capacity for surveying, um, to bring that back to you, yes.
Does the city or the H P B have a survey plan?
So, we do not have a survey plan currently, um, and so there's the historic preservation plan. Um, and I believe Andrea might have talked to you guys, but I know the city is interested in making historic preservation plan, and right now, what we're looking at is, like, uh, is the, is a survey plan a precursor to that preservation plan, is it a component of that preservation plan? But we are looking at making a, a survey plan.
I'm just thinking, I, I was doing some research on pres- preservation plans today for work.
Oh, cool.
And I read the Aurora str- strategic plan. Um, and they applied for a C L G grant, or an S H, C L G, um, grant, and hired a consultant to do a survey plan. And so I'm thinking that might be another option is, since we're C L G, I mean, that's a separate pot of money, only the C L Gs can apply for that. So we should maybe consider applying for a grant to, um, create a survey plan, and that way we know kind of what the higher priority areas are. You know, and base it off of maybe where our, our concentration of forty plus, or, or the ones that are maybe like thirty-five, but we know this is gonna take a few years, like, so kind of like a five-year plan type thing.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, if, if I could jump in for just a moment.
I, I could tell you were ready to say something.
Yeah, uh, there may be technological solutions, uh, to some of these, that I think it's important to have a, um, a very fluid, uh, way to update this list, because it could get old pretty quick. You know, maybe we can key into building permits, uh, if there's a building permit issued, staff knows they need to, uh, maybe do an update to the late Littleton Legacy List, or maybe there's a, I, I can talk to I T, but maybe there's a crowdsourcing, uh, uh, way on the interw- internet to say, do you want your property surveyed? Well, here's a process where, uh, you know, you, somebody sees the Littleton Legacy List, there's a some button on the internet that you can click to say, I'd like my property surveyed, and maybe we can have a process to do something like that, but it's all resource availability and, and, and that type of thing, but we can talk to I T as well.
Mm-hmm.
Chris?
What about, um, I, I know we have to be careful about how many people we have on a committee and everything, but what if we had like a subcommittee that dealt with the legacy list, and they were kind of the point people?
Didn't we have subcommittees in the past?
The Mid Mod Mile was a subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just thinking like, if, like you say, we have like this little button on the internet or s- some way that people are like, hey, I'm interested in this, then we have our little team of, you know, two people go out and survey it or a building permit trick or something, and so we go out and survey it and get the information to you, and that way, we either were updating, you know, prior information because they're coming in for a permit to change something, or we're capturing new buildings because somebody's interested and wants to know, or the subcommittee makes assignments or makes a list of properties to be surveyed and then we could delegate, everybody could contribute.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think ideally it would be nice to see continuous updates.
Right.
Instead of a.
It's a rolling thing instead of, yeah, by this time of year or whatever, yeah, just rolling.
That's why I think it needs some thought.
Sort of a, a database-based update, anyway, I, I interrupt the trip, so.
Yeah.
I'm hearing it's already baked into another process, so it's already workflowed, and then you can update Littleton Legacy through building permits or?
We definitely do not have a workflow on this, that it's already, uh, already set, but, uh, good to talk about kind of how often, uh, we should be trying to eventually get to continuous update. I, I think it would be my opinion. It's not on the board.
So.
You can use your direction.
So perhaps the answer to that question is, we don't know.
Okay.
But, um.
But we have some.
We also need direction from the city on, on a survey plan.
We do need a survey plan, and that, that is something that we've been trying.
Okay.
And it ties into what you were saying earlier about the C L G, like they require you to have a survey plan and to be doing survey consistently, and so I think that would facilitate that part of the requirement.
Fantastic to know. What we did originally with, um, we were doing the legacy list, as Amy said, um, we each received a, a list of addresses, and they were near our houses, and we went and, um, checked them out, we had the survey form from two thousand and one and said, is that, is it still there, has it changed significantly, and, you know, and, uh, take photos, and we did that. And, and that was very manageable, it was just a small chunk, um, and, you know, we could do something like that, just, you know, have, have our chunk of the list that we steward and, you know.
So it's kind of like the adopt a landmark, but just kind of keeping an eye on what's.
Same, same idea, they were each responsible for a certain number of residents.
Yeah.
But that feels sustainable.
Yeah.
All right, next question, are there any other ideas about how to use this list? Thoughts? I mean, I, we've kind of covered that already.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I feel like this one has been pretty expansively, um, or, or rather than many of the answers to the previous three questions can also touch on this one, especially around the public engagement pieces, I love the idea of crowdsourced surveys, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yes. I also had one more note was, which was a public open house. And, you know, I'm, I'm huge on the public outreach component, and I know when we did the downtown district, the re-survey and, you know, the city council tasked us with, with giving them information so they could decide on the expansion, you know, I, I just, I remember, you know, we started that in August of twenty twenty, and I was like, we need to start the public outreach process now.
Okay.
And it was like, well, no, it's in the time schedule, and I'm like, no, we, I, I worked in the National Register Program at the Colorado State Public, I know how this goes, and i- it was scheduled for May, and the first hearing was in August, and it got pushed back to June, and I get it, like, we were still in pandemic and, and all that kind of stuff, but I also get it from the perspective of the property owners in downtown, that they felt they were pushed to the last minute.
Okay.
Like they were an afterthought, and that's not a good thing, and so the, the sooner we can say, hey, we're gonna have an open house here, we're gonna have an open house here, you know, like, we're gonna do something at the chocolate therapist, and we could tell that's one of my favorite places. But, um, you know, or McKinner's Pizza, that's my other favorite place, or Willow, um, I was talking to the Willow people the other day, like, some really cool stuff going on there. But, you know, if we can have something where like we set up a little table outside, like, I'll go stand there and talk to people about the legacy list or what's going on with the Historic Preservation Board in downtown and, and how we want to do some more stuff, you know, beyond just the downtown because it's our gem, but we do have other cool stuff all scattered all around.
Yeah.
And so I just, I feel like the more we can be doing, you know, and a couple of open houses maybe tied to this, and then, you know, like the three park things, um, and honestly, if people are on vacation all summer, I will do all three of them, like, I just, I can't tell you how important that, that public outreach because they want to feel a part of the process, they don't want to feel like they're an afterthought.
Okay.
And I feel like that did happen a bit with, with the downtown district.
Good to know.
And I don't want to see that happen again, I want people to, to be excited about it and to share information with their neighbors and their friends and, and people, and so when somebody comes to town, oh my god, we have to go, you know, to this place or that place, or I have to show you, you know, this neighborhood because it's got the coolest houses, or there's really neat history over here.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are opportunities for that, the meet, greet, and eat is, is a great one, I mean, those are fantastic. And, um, Western Welcome Week.
Absolutely, there's another one, yes.
Is coming up, and, um, we have had a booth there, you know, back in the dark ages.
Should we walk in the parade?
Yeah, we should.
We should!
Yeah, we should dress up.
I have walked in the parade.
Like old-timey character, like Richard Little and, and Angelina.
And, and, um, it, but also H L I always has a booth, and we can team with H L I.
I, yeah.
And, um, the other is, uh, there's the event in May on, um, History Week or something like that, Rick sent out an email.
Yeah, it's doing Historic Preservation Month.
And so we'll have the opportunity there.
Yeah.
To, um, literally work the crowd and have a, a little table and do all kinds of stuff, uh, like that.
No, I, I feel like anytime there's some kind of event.
Yes.
That we should be looking at participating, um, in it, August nineteenth is the parade date.
Is the what?
August nineteenth.
That's W W W?
Is the parade. Um, but I, yeah, we should be participating, you know. People who just felt like they couldn't deal with restrictions on local landmarking. Um, or properties that had integrity issues and so they didn't quite meet the threshold for that. And so that might be something we could talk about, like another layer, um, you know, as you kind of go up. So that's something else to to kind of think about and research.
And I think that's a very interesting idea because one of the things that we're looking at is, you know, one of the components of historic preservation is the social history of how a community changes. And that isn't always accurately represented in the great architects, the leading figures in a community or the architectural styles in a community. So how do you incorporate those uh that social history, which can kind of exist outside of the boundaries of traditional historic preservation? Um, and the technical historic preservation principles, how do you build that into the historic preservation narrative of a community? And I think that's a great idea, like making a list that that is not a designated list, but is significant.
It's just like, yeah, there's history that's a part of this site that has contributed to Littleton's story.
Absolutely.
But they don't meet the criteria because maybe the building's been altered or something, but it's still part of the history. Or even some of the changes to the building are part of the the history.
Yeah.
The story of Littleton.
I think the name of the list helps convey that idea that it's a legacy list.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, maybe even combining that like with this legacy list, incorporating those properties into the list.
So it's just something that, you know.
Absolutely.
Down the road. But um, kudos to you, cause it it's um, I started a new job in July and it's the same kind of thing where like, here, can you finish this up? Or can you pick this up? And it is hard to kind of jump in midstream and kind of feel like you know what happened before you picked it up. And so thank you for diving in and.
Thank you all.
And being enthusiastic about it and um and asking, you know, question, good questions and stuff. Appreciate that.
And I very much appreciate the board, I mean, this has been a very wonderful board to work with in the limited time that I've I I've been able to work with you guys and I have learned so much and I'm continuing to. So this has been a wonderful discussion.
We're here to help.
Oh, I I feel of that very much, so very feel that this is a good partnership.
This is just, it's so exciting, you know, I was.
Yes, we've been waiting for this.
At first I was like, oh, a great legacy list, but then I was like, I'm really excited about it.
Yes.
It's so nice to get it back up.
Well, this will be on our website soon, so.
Excellent.
Really.
So that concludes this part, but Michael, you wanted to say something at the end of the meeting?
Uh, yes, so we will have an April meeting, I believe it's scheduled for April twen-
April seventeenth.
Seventeenth, thank you. Uh, uh, at the meeting, I think we do not have. Do we have anything on that agenda?
We have several things on that.
We have several.
It it may be a kind of a packed, at this point, it's looking like it's going to be kind of a busy agenda.
There will be a C O A on that meeting.
There will be a C O, so there is tentatively a C O A for that meeting. Um, the applicant has to give revised documents to us this week. Um, so we'll know by the end of this week if there will be a C O A or not, if not, there will be, uh, I'm anticipating a general business and a study session item.
So maybe, maybe not a hearing, but a.
Maybe, maybe not a hearings, but um most likely at least a general business and study session item, so.
So and then uh you will select your chair and vice chair that evening. Uh, there will not be a formal um training uh for that evening. Uh, uh, the attorney's office is going to do individual trainings at this point. Uh, with the new members, I think there's only four new board of commission members that they elected just to do individual trainings.
Okay.
So I wanted to pass that message along and uh, yeah, then we'll have several agenda items for that evening. So the the first order of business uh will be the the selection of chair and vice chair.
Anything, anybody else? Okay, we are finished at seven twenty seven this evening.
Thank you guys so much.